To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special session of the city council. Let all let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council. We'll be enacted under one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. And item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Any item that any council member wants removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and are ratified as presented.
Second.
By Claybaugh, second by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 biennial budget. Mr. Templemeier?
Yeah, just a second here. Okay. So tonight, we're going to go over where we think, where we see FY '21 ending up and what we've got budgeted for FY '22 and '23, again, because the city's on a biennial budget as we move forward. So we start with the general fund. Again, the general fund, these are on the city side of things. So you see our revenues coming in. What we're seeing for FY '21 is revenues of about $12.4 million. Those are up from previous years. Thing to keep in mind. Yes, sir.
So just so the people in the audience know and that you'll watch this, because you say on the city side, can you just give them a list of what is the city side and what is the BPW side? So everybody knows what we're, we know.
So yeah, when you're talking general fund, you're talking police, fire, public properties, library, general administration. Those are on the city side of things. Sanitation's on its own because they have their own funding source. And so they're kind of separate. Street Department, same thing. They have their own funding source, so they're separate. And then the BPW side is your utilities, and that's where you get electric, water, and wastewater. And then landfill is a totally different agency, which is run by a different board, and so their budget hearings are at a different time. That answer your questions? I see a lot of nods out there, so we must have covered it.
I think they're covered.
So again, general fund, we're on the city side, police, fire, those types of things. Revenues are up this year, but as you see there, we have CARES money of about $1.1 million. And you have the gas plant settlement for about $700,000. Thing to keep in mind about the gas plant settlement, that $700,000 is restricted. It can only be used for the gas plants and any improvements that need to be made at that area in the future. So it's not available to go buy police cars or library books or things like that. Look at FY '22, you see revenues come back down to just under $11 million. In '23, they're right around that $11 million mark. We do have in FY '22 and '23 probably the biggest changes as far as the revenue side of things go on an operational budget is the Richardson County. We've added them to the 911 agreement, so there's revenue coming in there. We have an increase in municipal equalization funds. Linda's done a great job figuring out that formula and how it works. And so we've got some additional funds coming in there. And then you have charges for services. So the BPW, the utilities, they help contribute back for our public relations position. They pay for part of that. You have the sanitation department, which just started. They pay the city for accounting services. So you see that revenue coming in. We have the recent contract with the hospital for police services. That's a new revenue source coming in on the operations sides for the general fund. So those are kind of the biggest changes on the revenue side moving forward. Yeah.
Richardson County, are they on board now?
Yes. We turn to the expenses. So you see there, general admin, community development, police, fire, public properties, library. Those are the ones that are paid for out of the general fund budget. For FY '21, you see about $10 million is what we expended. FY '22, it does increase up to about $12 million. Again, you just received about $1.1 million in CARES money. You have budget to spend another $900,000 of that. And FY '22, that's partly due to the increase that you see there. And then it comes back down in FY '23. On the operations side, general admin, you did have an increase because you added a sanitation accounting clerk, partly being paid for. So you have coming here. Again, that community relations position that we talked about, we have part-time receptionists. Those are some changes on the expenditure side on the city moving forward. You will see an increase in the community development department's budget of $20,000 for additional demolitions. So you see that additional expenditure here. Police departments, we've got two additional officers for the hospital contracts. You have two additional dispatchers for Richardson County. We just showed you the new revenue coming in. These are additional expenses. Ends up being a net positive for the city. And then the fire department's had administrative assistant for a couple of years. It's kind of been split between the city and the BPW. This time, we finally moved it all the way officially 100% over to the city side of the budget. So operational, this comes in changes. Yes, sir.
The $20,000 extra on the demolition, what does that bring us up to, Toby? Do you remember?
I believe it's up to $80,000 per year.
How many homes do you think that should take down?
Depends. What we've learned is obviously depends on the size of the house, depends what's inside the house. We generally have found if we kind of bundle them together, we can get some better pricing. I would say you could probably get somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to 10, depending on size of houses.
Boy, we, we, is there any way that you could come up with some more? We've got, we've got a bunch of junk houses we've got to get tore down. And I know they, we've, they've come to me, well, we're out of money this year, and then we'll have to wait till next year. And if it was up to me, I'd, I'd put some extra money in there if it was. But you guys take a look at it, because I'd like to get as many of them down as we can.
Sure.
So, all right. Thank you. Just my two cents.
Look at capital projects on the city side of the ledger, if you will, moving for FY ' '22. You see a number of parks near Hannibal Park, Astro Park, Chautauqua Park. You see improvements in all of those types of areas. We are working on a trail there along Highway 136 from 24th to 26th. We've got a couple of different funding sources we're looking at. We're working on a grant that you'll see later on tonight for that project as well. Library, if anybody's been around for a number of years, that's been in the budget for, I don't know how many years that has been out there. Mark's telling me five, that we've kind of kicked that one around. But we finally got that one funded and have it move forward. The last one, you see down in the three fields at the YMCA, it's something we've talked about. We're still looking at some additional revenue sources, see if they're available. If they do, we'll look to move that project forward. If they don't, that project will simply get delayed. And so, but we are seeing what we can work out there with the YMCA and others on that possibility as well. FY '23, again, just have a number of different park improvements, kind of a lot of maintenance that needs to be done. You know, masonry work at the police station, some of those things are just improvements you need to do to keep the buildings up. Your comp plan, your comp plan was written in 2001. And so it's time to be updated. I mean, we're at 20-plus years. And so we would like to get that revised and get that updated. We'll look to see if we can't find some grant funds to help us with that cost as well. But that's kind of what we have on the docket, if you will, for capital projects in FY '23. And then on the CARES Act, we talked about this at the work session. Nothing has changed from the last conversation we had. These are the projects we're looking to fund with CARES dollars. Again, police, fire types of expenditures, all of these things have either been in the budget for a number of years, looking for some type of funding source, or are items that we generally would issue a public safety debt to fund these moving forward. You'll see by doing these with CARES dollars, you'll see how that impacts the public safety debt and the overall tax levy here a little later. But... So sanitation department, again, doesn't get any funding from the general fund, so we made its own segment here, if you will. FY '21, obviously, your revenue and expenditures were higher. You had the bond issuance and you were out buying assets. And so that's why you see those two higher there. In FY ' '22, we project to come in about $2.5 million and have a positive cash increase of about $1,800. So it's, I mean, it's tight as we move those things forward. Operations, about 1.3. Capital expenditures, about 1.3. But I will note on your capital expenditures, right? When you think capital expenditures, most people think you're out buying vehicles and that kind of stuff, buildings. What you'll notice is the bond payments, $265,000. And then sanitation department has to pay Boswa for the use of the landfill, right? It was always set up that way before, that we continued the same mechanism. And so Boswa, you see those payments to Boswa are about $820,000, $850,000 a year. So...
And that's where you thought that'd be?
Yes. Yeah. You know, we'll get some more years under our belt, learn a little bit more, see how things kind of flow out. But you know, things are right about where we thought they would be here. Yes. When you do look at what the capital expenditures are for the sanitation department, they're billing improvements, fence repairs. There's some things that, we have some heaters that need to be replaced. He's got some LED lights that we want to install in the buildings and make a little more energy efficiency, some of those types of things. On equipment, you have roll-offs that need to be replaced, dumpsters need to be replaced. We'd like to get some totes, especially recycling totes for the community. Those are probably the biggest expenditures for next year that we're looking at. We've got a couple of grants we're working on to help us out with the totes. In FY '23, the biggest expenditures are rear loader. We run several rear loaders every day. Again, we just got to keep that fleet up until it's current and viable for Jason and his guys when you go down there. So the rear loader there is in FY '23 moving in that budget. No question on sanitation. We'll go to the Board of Public Works. Again, this is your utility side of things, water, electric, wastewater. The street department gets thrown in there as well when you talk about BPW. On the electric side of, when you look at FY '21, the thing to remember is February. That event in February cost the city about $1.5 million. And so that's the biggest impact on their budget, both on the income side and in the expense side of things. Expenses, you see about $18 million. Again, about $1.5 million higher than we had anticipated. Ended up being a negative cash reserve then for the year of about just under $700,000. FY '22, in January 1 of FY '22, you were 100% away from MPBD. And so we have our energy contracted then for roughly through 2030 with different entities. So we know very well where our public, our purchase power costs are going to be in FY '22 and '23. And you see, working on building those cash reserves back up over the next couple of years to compensate for that February event. On the capital side for the electric department, the one I want to note first is the one that's at the top of the pages. This is one everybody cares about. This is repairing the drive-through lane at City Hall, right? I get more complaints about the drive-through lane at City Hall than anything else. And so, yes, we have heard the complaints, and yes, we make sure it gets repaired right away in FY '22. Other than that, you see that, you know, he's got some trucks replaced. Just make sure everybody understands the trucks that the electric department uses are expensive, and they're big, and they take a while to get here. We may order it October 1st. It may be a year before it shows up. And that's been pretty typical. I don't know what COVID will do to that timeline, probably make it worse. And then in FY '23, you see the expense there, a substation improvement for $745,000. This would be the substation out by BSDC. One thing the electric department's been working on is upgrading the system, the distribution voltage around our town. It makes the system more efficient. When they finish out a certain area, then they need to upgrade the substation itself. Couple of years ago, we upgraded the substation out by Southeast Community College. So this is the next one to be improved. But again, you see it's three quarters of a million dollars. I will note, though, if you do look at the operating budget, it's done with cash. We're not bonding it. We're not borrowing money. It's done simply with cash and cash flow. I think it was very impressive for the electric department to be able to do that and make those type of improvements.
This leaves how many?
That need to be repaired, or that be upgraded yet? I believe we're down to one or two. I think so. I'd have to ask Pat for sure, but...
You've done one. Essentially, you've done one. I'm sorry.
Try to do one every couple of years as they kind of move around. And I know on, if you look in the capital budget, the 34, 5 KV conversion, I think he's got five years left, which makes me think he's got about two more substations to do.
And it's my understanding that, that lasts for six to eight before he has to redo that again?
Oh, no. Those substations may even have been touched for 50 years.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's a long-term investment. Now, like everything else, you've got some parts that wear out a little faster, but the bulk of the stuff is in there for a number of years unless they're struck by lightning. Or squirrels. That's the other part we have issues with.
Yeah, they only do that once.
They only do it once. That's correct. Water department, biggest thing that impacts the water department in FY '22 and '23 is our SRF loan that they're working on getting from the state. So you look, if you back that out, everything stays pretty similar. There's no change in the operation. You know, the income stays right around that 2.7 mark each year, once you kind of back those other numbers out. Their expenses stay right in the same line. You do see cash reserves dipping just a little bit in FY '22. That's because Steve's got some project in there that we decided just go ahead and fund rather than pushing it back any further, because again, his cash reserves were in adequate position. We felt we could do that. Then you notice the energy efficiency program. We've had one on the electric side for years. But again, as we're leaving MPBD, we're no longer tied to their program. And so we're trying to branch that out into the other departments. For the water department, what would be is a rebate on low-flow toilets. So if somebody were to install one, we'd offer rebate back at City Hall for those types of infrastructure improvements on the consumer side. Steve's water, water department capital projects here, as you'll see, are their water main projects. He's got several projects that his guys will do here next year. We've got the boring of the transmission line there. That was a project originally budgeted for FY '21. But due to some holdup and some paperwork, it took us a little longer to get that project completed. The contractors...
Is that the one that's going under the river?
Yes, out northwest of town. So the contractor is scheduled to be here in here early fall and get that completed. So it'll be done here shortly and into FY '22. And then his SRF projects, we're still working exactly when those will occur. But Olson's is busy designing those. So we made a guess that we'd spend about $5 million next year on SRF funds. We're not entirely sure quite yet. And so you may end up having to amend the budget either, depending on exactly where those projects come in at. And then in FY ' '23, you see, just again, more water main projects being done throughout the community. Steve, every about five or six years, he has a survey done, a study done by Olson's. They come in, they make a list of water projects that need to be upgraded based upon our model of our water system. And those are how he kind of picks his projects and moves forward. And then he also has to do some institutional knowledge. We know which pipes have had breaks on them a number of times recently. We look to get those addressed rather than continue to fix the same pipe over and over again. WPC department, FY '21, that year was really impacted by their dewatering project. And so when you look at, they spent $2.5 million, a decrease in cash reserves. It was because they spent the years prior to that increasing cash reserves, banking money, again, making a large improvement to the wastewater facility down there to tune about $4 million, and paying for it with cash. And so again, a nice program there lined out, made sure that they had the money available to them to make those improvements and didn't have to borrow money. FY '22, you see, we've got one project there that we'd like to get budgeted. We've had it on the list for a couple of years. We went ahead and put it in the budget, which resulted in a decrease in cash reserves there. But we like to make those back up in FY '23 as we move forward. Again, we have an energy efficiency program. We're looking to initiate in the sewer department. What we're experiencing in that department is broken sewer taps. So, right, your service line comes out of your house, goes into the main. It's been a while. A lot of times, those taps break. And some of them are 50 years old plus. Causes a couple of issues. Either one, all of your gray water then either just pours into the ground at that location, and we have environmental issue. Or two, it's where tree roots are likely to enter into our system and create root balls, which then block up the sanitary sewer main. It may not cause an impact to you, but may cause an impact to your neighbor or your neighbor that lives a block away. So try to make sure we can redress those, find a way to help people get those paid for, get them fixed, ultimately so they improve our system. So that's the energy efficiency program we've come up for the wastewater program or department as we move forward. On the capital side of things, the industrial park bypass is the one that we've had budgeted for a couple of years and kept pushing back due to some budget constraints. We'll look to get that one done. What that would do is separate the wastewater coming out of the industrial park and have it no longer run through the Glenover area, but run around it. So if you did have an issue, you're not backing that water up into the residential homes in the, in the area there. The other one you see there is the 14th and Lincoln Street project. There's a private sewer line there. We're looking to address this next year. And then the next process at the wastewater plant to be addressed would be the grit process. And so we have a budget, a budget to do a study in FY '22. And then in FY '24 is when we would look to probably start that process of repairing that next section of the wastewater plant that's down there. But first, we need to have the study done. And then we'll look to do that next section.
Is the city paying for all of that $50,000 for 14th and Lincoln?
That would cover, should cover the cost of installing it. There would still be cost on the private side for hooking up to the sanitary sewer main. Street department, if you look at the street department, their revenues are very consistent. I mean, we're at 2.6 this year, 2.6 the next year, 2.7. I mean, they're very consistent where they get their funding source from. Same thing with operating expenditures. Their capital expenditures can float just a little bit depending on when projects get completed. So if a street project gets pulled over just a little bit into the next fiscal year, you can see one year the capital cash reserves get decreased because of when projects happen or get bumped up the next year. So that's why you see that kind of where it's at. But overall, they stay right around that $1 million mark as we move forward. Really, no change in operations, same number of guys, no changes with equipment, that kind of stuff. When you look at the street department's capital budget, you've got the Millinole Lake project. It's up around the old hospital site. After construction up there, that road kind of got beat up, needs some repairs. And so we're going to go address some of that area. We've got the bridge rails on there for South Sixth Street Bridge. I think the ones on West Court have gone over well. Same style to do the West Court Street, or excuse me, the South Sixth Street Bridge. And so I know we've already been working on getting those measured, trying to get everything moving forward. Street department installed them again, probably looking again somewhere in that early springtime period is probably what we would look at. But then we get to, to Lincoln Street. And we've talked about Lincoln Street for a number of years. We talked about 19th Street. We talked about Hoyt Street. I mean, there's a couple of those streets out there that we've wanted to address. And while we talked internally, Lincoln Street, just based upon the amount of traffic that it gets, the Millinole Lake projects that we do on it just don't seem to hold up. And so we need to look at making that street into concrete moving forward. But it's one of those that you want to design the entire street rather than pouring one block at a time. If anybody's driven on, on Lincoln Street, you know there's a slight jog at 12th, right? That you want, if you want to take that out of the street, you have to decide exactly when you start to do that. And where at what makes sense. Does Lincoln Street need to be three lanes with a center turn lane? Does it need to be two? Is it two and a parking lane? Is there parking on the whole thing? Is there parking on two sides of the street? Just one side, only in a certain area? Those are all things to think about. And the only way to really look at them is if you design the entire corridor at one time rather than just trying to engineer it one block at a time, because there's not much you can change. Once I pour 12th Street, I can't really get the jog out by the time I get 13th.
From where to where?
Looking from 5th to 19th is what we're looking at. And you'll see, next year, we have planned to pour 4th to 5th on Lincoln and on 4th Street from Lincoln to Grant. So you get to the top of the hill, we'd pour that next turn around there and then look to design that from 5th Street on out to 19th.
I would have preferred to go from, to 22nd. That's where it widens out.
Okay.
When you look at it from 19th to 21st, part of it's a gut, a curvy gutter. There's, you know, there's a jog over there, too. And you're either, you know, you're, it needs, it needs to be looked at as well. Although the problem that you're going to have part of that is from about 20th to 21st Street, if you're going to have to dig down there, that, there's brick under there.
Right. Yeah, I think we stopped at 19th just because we knew that, you know, get, get 18th, 19th, there's usually some concrete there. But, you know, as we look with the design, hire some outside engineering firms, we can look to maybe expand or shrink that scope depending on where budgets come in at.
There's heavily trafficked with Lincoln School there. They access that off that side, so...
We've had a study done at 19th and Lincoln, where we've got one budget this year for 6th and Lincoln Street. And so this would add the corridor in between there. And then in FY '23, you see we've got 13th, Beaver to Oak. Anybody out in the country club area knows that street very well. We've got a sanitary sewer line out there that looks like it's causing some issues. And so we need to get that, that road fixed there. We still haven't forgotten about 19th Street. We're looking to address that some way, shape, form, or another as well. And then Indiot has a project on Highway 136 from roughly 2nd Street out to about 21st, somewhere in there. We haven't got the exact plans yet. As of now, they tell us we are not financially responsible for any portion of that project. And that would be in August of 2024. So that may change the budget completely.
How far down the road is 19th Street?
Depends on funding sources. I think once you get Lincoln Street designed, then that will be a question we come back to and say, okay, do you want to rebuild it one block at a time? Do you want to go out for a bond? Do you want, here are some options, and what do we want to explore, and how we want to handle it? We looked at 19th Street because 19th Street is holding up a little bit better. The concrete is. We got to address the stormwater issue, but the concrete's holding it better than Lincoln Street where the surface is not holding up as well. And that's why we picked Lincoln Street first. All right. So all that said, everybody wants to kind of just know where the city at, how things are looking. So got you two graphs here. So start with the one on the left. Basically, on FY '21, where's the city getting their money from? And again, when we talk about the city, this is the general fund, police, fire, public properties, those guys, not utilities, and not sanitation, not street department. So they're getting 48% of their money from taxes. You see another, the license and permits, those are building permits. That's where the biggest source comes from there. When you look at intergovernmental, people who pay us 911 fees, FRIES, those places, that goes into intergovernmental. And municipal equalization funds go into that category as well. So that's the two biggest sources on the intergovernmental. On the charges for services, camping is in there, so your campgrounds. But it's the new hospital agreement goes into that, that pool there. Ambulance fees go in there. When other departments pay for accounting or legal services. So again, the utility department pay for the accounting services and legal services that the city offers, those get into that bucket. So you go to the right-hand side of the screen there, and you say, okay, of that 48% that are taxes, where do those tax dollars come from on the city? 42.7% comes from property tax, and 47.6% becomes from sales tax. And then again, another 10% come from occupation tax. A large portion of it is your sales tax, which is larger than your property tax at this point. So the next graph I have here shows that property tax levy for tax year 2020, if you live in the city Beatrice, of your property taxes, 53% of them went to Beatrice Public Schools. 19.3% went to the county, 19.4% went to the city. So again, those dollars are what get used to provide police protection, fire protection, increased parks, library, all that stuff gets funded from that, that portion there. So we often talk to you about the unrestricted general fund balance for the city. So unrestricted is key word in there, right? So we talked earlier about the gas plant got $700,000. It does not go in here because those funds are restricted, right? They can only be used for the gas plant. So that's not listed in here. You'll see that first bump, if you will, downwards in 2017. So when you had the gas plant cleanup, you paid for it one year. You got a little bit money back the next year. The bump up in FY '21, you had CARES money of $1.1 million, currently sitting in your cash reserves at the end of the year. And then next year, you have budget to spend that money, which is why you come back down. Now, the next question I'm going to get asked is, why does the city need nearly $3 million in cash reserves? And I would tell you, you're looking at one day here, right? This is September 30th. Again, if you go back a couple of slides, where's the city get their money from? Half it comes from property taxes, half come from sales tax. When do you pay your property taxes? You pay property taxes, right, in May and September, which means the city gets large influxes of money in June and October. After you paid them, the counties had a chance to go through them. They sent them in down to us. And then, so half our money comes in two months. So when you get to February, it's been a long time since you got a payment in on those property taxes. So when you get to February, it's been a long time since you got a payment in on those property taxes. Those numbers look substantially different in February, March, April. So you need to make sure you have enough cash in there during those months to continue to be able to operate the city. And then September thirtieth, this is where you kind of see it at the end here. On the debt side of things, at the end of this fiscal year, the city will have just about twelve million dollars in debt. You see them listed there, your public safety debt gets paid off next year. Your fire station, those bonds are out there, those are sales tax. And then you have sanitation debt, which is on the revenue that sanitation department brings in. By twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two, those will all be paid off as we move forward. On the BPW side of thing, again, so this is water, electric, and sanitary sewer. They have less than a million dollars in debt at this point. You see, I was kind of divided it up between the different departments. But they have a bond that should get paid off this next year, FY twenty-two. And another bond gets paid off in twenty twenty-four. We do need to add the SRF loan for the water department. Once that gets finalized, that will get added up here. But at this point, you can see all three of those departments have very little amount of debt as they move forward. And then the last slide is the one that everybody really cares about, right? And that is what are we projected for rates moving forward? So if we start at the top, that are tax levy. What we're first looking at is in FY twenty-two, and the budget that we are proposing to you tonight has a decrease in your tax levy of just over two percent. And in FY twenty-three has a decrease in your tax levy of another seven percent. Again, you go back to your CARES money. Using the CARES dollars to pay for things that normally we would issue public safety debt for allows us to retire that debt and not issue new debt. Which in return allows us to lower your tax levy, which then benefits everybody in the community.
Reminding them can't pay, you can't use the CARES money to pay down debt.
Correct. The electric department, we talked about it last budget, or last meeting here. We had John Kraske here, we were there, but no rate increase there is what we're proposing. The water department, we've got proposing here an increase in the consumption rate of ten cents per thousand gallons. I told the BPW, I tried to figure out what that was for a cup of water and the numbers got so small that I gave up trying to calculate it. But it, I mean, ten cents for a thousand gallons of water is very minimal. If you're the normal, average residential consumer, you'll see an increase of forty-eight cents per month on your bill. Now, if you water your lawn, you will so, you will see a bigger increase, right? If you don't water your lawn, you will not, so. But the average person will see about forty-eight cent increase per month. WPC, we have proposed a twenty-five cent increase per thousand gallons in FY twenty-two and twenty-three. Those increases are sixty-seven cents per month for the average residential consumer. So again, not a huge increase on, on those two. And then sanitation, FY twenty-two, we have no rate increase there. FY twenty-three, right now, we've thrown out to about two dollars a month. That one's fluid. What we want to do is get another year under our belt, learn exactly where we're at. But I want everybody to keep in mind that all the years before, right? When you were sanitary garbage for years, every year, your garbage rate went up. Either it was the haulers amount went up or the landfill went up every year. And they were dimes, nickels, quarters, they weren't ever much in a year. But each year, you had an increase from one or the other. But we took over in April, we kept the rates the same. We're not asking for a rate increase in FY twenty-two. So in FY twenty-three, we're going to need to increase the rates either on the landfill side, the hauler side, or both. So that's why, again, you haven't seen a rate increase for a couple of years there. When normally, people are used to an increase every year on one side or the other as we move forward.
So you're still looking at an increase in the WPC in twenty-two and twenty-three? If we find another funding source for that? If we have another funding source for the water treatment plant, do you still, do you still see these?
It depends what we, at that point, we'd have to have the conversation, say, okay, ARPA money is the biggest one that's out there, right? You've got a couple million dollars of ARPA money sitting there, wastewater is an eligible expense. Do you simply pay for some of the items currently budgeted for with ARPA money and not have the rate increase? Possibility. Or do you move some of those other projects up that you've been wanting to get done to the plant and pay for them with ARPA dollars rather than issuing bonds for them?
And I'd just like to remind you that, you know, just a few minutes ago, you were bragging to everybody, we just paid cash.
We did.
We paid cash for these things.
We did.
So I'm just saying that, you know, if we just paid cash, we wouldn't have rate increases. I'm just, that's where.
Eventually, you still have rate increases, right? Employees liking rate?
On twenty-two and twenty-three.
Well, you know, you haven't had a rate increase in the WPC since twenty sixteen.
I'm just making my pitch.
We could, we could discuss it. So that's what we have in there for FY twenty-one. It's kind of what we looked at for FY twenty-two and twenty-three. At this point, I'd open up to any questions that anybody has up here?
Any questions from the council above?
I didn't see anything in there and it's probably maybe too minute. But technology and data security, I mean, you know, we got hit with that crunch. There's going to be more cyber attacks probably just as part of nature. Are we okay there? Do we need upgrades? How do we, how do we protect ourselves there?
Good question. We do have money budgeted in both the city side for those type of IT services. We have money budgeted in the utility side for those type of IT services to continue to make upgrades. We are also out talking to a couple of different vendors at this point, getting proposals from them about upgrading systems as well. So, we are having those conversations and we do have money budgeted for those types of things.
One more follow-up question, it's really not a question, it's more of a statement. Because I think the department heads do really well. I think some of the department heads might have a little bit of white hair like I do. They have a lot of knowledge and they know where a lot of stuff is. Have, they, have we talked about some type of at least sharing of that knowledge so that it doesn't hold in one person or another?
Yes.
I mean, you know, Steve does a great job. But on the other side of the coin, there may be a time when he decides he wants to just maybe retire.
We ain't going to let you, Steve.
So, I, I'm just thinking that we have all these great resources and there should be some way to at least help document before we lose those great resources.
Yes, that's something we work with, make sure that institutional knowledge doesn't walk out with those guys. Because I'm always amazed, we have a sinkhole, all of a sudden just forms in some alleyway and Steve will come and tell me nineteen eighty-seven, so-and-so was trenching in here. Why don't we go ask them?
I didn't mean to put Steve on the spot, but he does a great job and he knows those things. So, it's like, you know, I hate to, I don't want that to, to, to leave because there are so many things that in his head, he just knows it.
Right.
You know, and speaking of the institutional knowledge, Linda will be retiring not too far down the road. Was Hannah involved in all this process of budgeting and everything?
I think Hannah was more involved than she anticipated. Hannah did a great job. I think Hannah did a lot of the, the hands-on work. I think after a while, they stopped letting Linda know, I just emailed Hannah and told her what changes to make.
So that means one of these days, I'm going to have to ask Hannah, is everything okay?
Any other questions to the council? Yes, Rich?
When I was looking through this, one thing just kind of stood up at me. And I know, I know this is really petty, but the firearm range upgrades. Do the county officers use that range also?
That'd be a question I'd ask these guys back here.
Does the county give us any money for that? Because we've got sixty thousand dollars of firearm range upgrades. And if they're using it, don't you think they should pay for a little of it?
Yeah, we would like that. We would ask, if we get this upgraded, we would ask them to start paying some kind of fee.
Okay. I, I know that's petty, but sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Well, we also figure there's the B involved and a little more responsibility to maintain as well. So, they invest in it as well, and it's that responsibility. And then to also respect the facilities and that.
Any other questions to the council?
One thing, when Rich brought up about the demo budget, I kind of agree with Rich. We do have a lot of properties that need addressing. I would, it'd be nice if we could find a little money for that. I don't know.
Actually, no, but I'd like to get a lot.
Able to do on a manual basis. And I think that, that is kind of the crux, crux of the matter.
That's, that becomes the next bottleneck, if you will, is the time both between the community development department and then legal department to be able to process that many of them. Each one of them's different and unique. Some of them are very easy and you could get done, done fairly quickly. We have others that we all know about that have taken years, all right? And we still don't have a resolution to them. And I don't care how much money you gave me in what year, I still haven't been able to get that, that particular project accomplished yet.
Is that what I hate you at about this, righty?
Yeah, sir. And so, I think even if you put more dollars in there, I don't know you'd get any more properties torn down. And if it got to be one of those, that if, if Rob and Chet are able to chew through all eighty thousand dollars and they come back to you and say, hey, listen, I got five more houses lined up, we would bring it back to you and say, guys, are you willing to amend the budget and throw some more dollars at this?
Yeah, sounds good.
At that point.
Yep, that sounds good.
But that being said, that's always the, that's always the endpoint. We're out of money, we're, we're done looking. I, I lean towards Mike and Rich and say, if there was more money in that fund, because it seems to stop. Because I, you and I've had that conversation, Stan's had the conversation, the other councilmen, well, we're out of money for this year. We're going to do it, and we're going to do it after October when we have more money. I, it does get pushed down. That can get, that can get kicked down the road a little bit when we run up against that because we're out of money. I, I've heard it a number of times. Yep.
And also, you know, we, we just, at the first of the year, we all went into this. Yeah, we got to get these properties cleaned up and, and it, it's going to take what it takes. And if we need more money, we just need, we're going to have to find it. Because those, those things need to be brought down. How many neighbors do you get? That property is junk, and I, you know, I can understand. I wouldn't want to live next to junk either, which I, no.
And I would have no, Rich, I had a problem amending the budget if we could get more torn down too.
Yep.
If they're going to stick with the, this dollars and these dollars in the budget, if we, if we get to a point, I don't think you're going to have any no votes on the council that says, oh, we're not going to tear anything else down. We can amend the budget then too. But I'm okay either way, but I'd sure like to see more demo. I'd like to see more prop, more dilapidated structures demoed than we are currently doing on a year-to-year basis.
Any other questions before we open it up to the public?
Dan? I'm going to agree with what these other three have said because I think if you put the money in the budget upfront, then the community knows we're serious about it. It's, if we run out of the money, they're just like, it's out of the money. And that's what every one of us have said, is we want to get rid of these dilapidated properties throughout the community because they're terrible. They need to go away. My other concern is, I'm looking through the capital projects and I see that five hundred and thirty-five thousand approximately could be allocated towards Hannibal Park or Showcase on the east side. But I'm seeing very little at Chicago Riverside and/or the ball fields on the west side as well. I know that a lot of stuff and time goes in, the energy goes into those three facilities as well. And I'd like to see something at least annotated that we're going to do some sort of improvements over the next couple of years at those two, at those facilities.
I think one thing to keep in mind when you look at those facilities is Hannibal Park, it says five hundred thousand. You have a girls' softball association that contributes a large sum of money towards those projects. Whereas, you maybe not have the same type of cooperation on other facilities.
I know at least one we do.
And so, but we certainly will continue to look at those projects. When it comes to the demo budget, if you guys want to increase the dollars to the demo budget, you got to give me some idea of where you want the dollars to come from. Either we need to cut it out of another department. So again, it's got to be on the city side of things, so police, fire, parks, libraries, something like that. Or you've got to increase the tax levy, all right? Every penny gets you about sixty thousand dollars is a rough number. Or you got to run a bigger deficit. You're already, this budget's already calling for a deficit. You saw your cash reserves continue to decline over the next couple of years. I certainly would not recommend running any more of a deficit than what's in here. So if you want to allocate additional dollars to demolition, I'd like to hear where you'd like us to take that from.
I think we found thirty thousand already if we split the difference between the firearm upgrades between the city and the county.
Those are CARES dollars.
I know, we can get them to chip in though, thirty grand. They got plenty of money sitting over there.
I guess that wasn't too petty that I brought that up, huh?
I'll look at it, I'll look at it. I'll make, I'll give you an idea. I'm not going to do it tonight, but I'll, I'll take some time.
I think I would rather, gentlemen, take a look at it. I mean, Tim, you're on it, Ted, you're on it, Rich is, and so is Mike. We're not going to let it go away. I would like to reassess it at another time, maybe a year from now. Or when we run out of money, whether or not we can fund it again. That's what I'd rather do. As opposed to increase taxes and take it from some other departments and just do half the roof at the library and that kind of thing. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? All right, any comments from the public? Michael? Jacob? Craig?
We will keep this brief. Thank you very much. I am Jacob May. I am the board president of the Main Street Organization. This is Craig Zerbinicki, a board member. And then Michael Sowden.
Gentlemen can sit down if you like.
Okay. Michael Sowden is our executive director. We're requesting thirty thousand dollars of support for downtown economic development. Michael handed out the pieces of paper to everybody here tonight. There's basically four main aspects of this is targeting annual marketing campaign, marketing training for our small businesses, entrepreneurship development and retention, and then regular consultation visits with our property owners.
Opened, questions for you guys?
Mayor?
Gary?
We've had some discussions prior to this. Are you, is your organization willing to open up the finances similar to what Engage does?
Yes, I, I would, from conversations with our board, that's not a problem at all.
Will you keep on with this kind of association with Engage and the Chamber of Commerce and try to increase the collaboration from what you're doing now and work with them?
Yes, yeah, so currently, we've, we've got a great collaboration going with Engage and in the Beatrice area chamber. Don't anticipate that at all diminishing, if anything, certainly with eyes towards increasing that. As, as we all know, there's been changeover and different staff in those positions. And we are going to continue to, to try to make sure that we're developing stronger relationships as we crawl in our positions for a little bit longer.
I kind of see this as, as helping us with some of the things you were talking about earlier. Anytime you can keep a building occupied and work with people to keep it repaired, it's that much less that we're going to spend down the road. I can think of five buildings right now and with our experience before, about three hundred thousand dollars on the one project we've had. It don't take long to make a couple million dollars that we could be happy to deal with in a public safety and health issue to tear down, not that far in the future. So I support what you're going to do. And I would, thirty thousand a year for a couple of years. I would like to see you use it more for this. Pay, maybe we could pay them quarterly. And I support it as long as you agree, agree to do all these things that Tobias or Trevor could make in an agreement for you. So, and that's the reason I support it because thirty thousand a year for a couple of years or even a little longer is a lot cheaper than tearing down buildings for a couple million bucks any day of the week. Thank you.
There is a, a place in here where you proposed to hire a marketing firm to develop a campaign. We have allocated twenty thousand dollars in the next fiscal year's budget for this. So, if there's twenty thousand there already, is ten adequate?
So, you know, coming back to that question about collaboration. You know, over the last few years, Tobias, we've been talking between the city, Main Street, Chamber, Engage. But this is something that we definitely want to end up being able to do. So, you know, there's no doubt that as part of our planning, this is something that, that we definitely think is important. As we were asked to try to come up with some of those projects that certainly fall within certain guidelines and parameters, that is one of those. There's no doubt that a campaign can very quickly take tens of thousands of dollars. And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, as we start looking long-term, you know, this being a two-year budget, that, that we can, Main Street definitely wants to contribute more to that than what, what you guys just have. And, and so is Engage and the Beatrice Chamber.
Aren't we restricted? We can't just write you a check, okay? So there are some restrictions to how we can actually dole out the dollars.
That's correct. You have to fall under a couple of different funding mechanisms out there. One is state statute thirteen dash three-one-five. If you fall under that one, it talks about encouraging immigration, new industries, investments, conducting publicity campaign. conducting publicity campaign. But then you have to fall under, it has to be a public purpose. And public purpose is defined by state statutes and by the courts. And when we've looked at it previously, it cannot fund salaries, it cannot fund fundraisers, cannot fund operations and maintenance. Those types of things are not allowed under that, that mechanism. And of the list that you have there before us, I don't think any of them can be funded under that mechanism, thirteen, three one five. So then the other one you look to is the economic development program. What commonly people refer to is LB eight forty around here, but it's your economic development program. That has some different goals that are listed out in there. You have to find, try to find an eligible activity. So your marketing campaign, again, it's already in your budget, if you look on page fifty of your budget book, there's a capital, or excuse me, there's a expenditure in there of twenty thousand dollars already for that, that particular activity. If you look at the marketing and the entrepreneurship development, those are things that can be funded out of economic development. If those are things the city wants to do, what I would recommend is if Main Street has a particular individual that they'd like to bring into the community, bring forth a contract, let the city hire them, pay them through your economic development program, that way you don't pay the money directly to Main Street. We don't have to worry about trying to find their finances and make sure they qualify. We can skip all those steps. And then that way we can open it up, working with Main Street to both people in the downtown and throughout your community and bring them in to hear these speakers to help us, not only help any businesses in the downtown, but businesses throughout the community. And then the last one, the regular consultations with property owners, again, doesn't fall under thirteen, three fifteen and I don't see how it falls under your economic development program. And so I don't think we have a funding mechanism for that particular project that will qualify.
How do we fund Main, or Engage?
Engage is funded through your economic development program.
And we don't just write them a check?
Right.
We write them a check. We write, we have a contract with Engage and we write them a check.
I go through every one of their finances, every quarter, to verify which expenditures qualify and which ones do not qualify.
And then we write them a check.
No, it comes here, yes.
Of course, what I'm saying is, we don't give them the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is, this is where I come out on this. We've had these, we've started this discussion, some of the people here on the council started the discussion back in May. And, and I understand the parameters of all of this, but it's, the majority of the council agrees that this is something that we'd like to fund, this is our budget. I know it's your budget presented to us, but, but basically, we work, we work for the community, we're trying to make the community a little better. This is a, this, this isn't that much money.
Don't, don't disagree, wanna follow the guidelines, Ted?
I, I get it, but there's a way through, and I don't wanna use the term there's a way around this because there's a way through this, we can fund this in, in a norm, in, in several different ways. It, you, you wanna write them a check for thirty thousand dollars, you can simply say it's a membership fee to Main, Main Street and you can do it that way.
Don't think you can.
It, it just, I, I get the impression that, that there's some drawback, there's some pullback from either staff or city thing, or city, that they don't wanna do this.
I don't think that's true at all, Ted, I think what you're-
It feels that way, Stan.
Listen to me, everything that you see here, I agree with, a hundred percent. There's a lot of things that is in here that I'm not sure why it isn't being done today.
Right, so, but this is the only, this is the only-
The funding, the funding mechanism is a little different than through the economic development group.
And I get that, but this is the only organization, that's a private organization that helps us administer our city's comprehensive plan. No other outside agency does that. You wanna hire them to do that? Because they're the only ones doing that and we're not funding them for that. Where, there, they are a driving force between the downtown revitalization grants that everyone in the community benefits from and, and we're not helping them with that. In, in very blunt terms, you guys work for us, we'd like you to put six, the thirty thousand dollars in for this year and the next thirty thousand dollars is next year and, and we'd like you to find a way to do that. And, and that's, and, you know, it comes to a vote, that's what we should just do is just vote on and say, this is what we want you to do. It's, it's as simple as that.
Bob?
I, I guess, you know, I understand there's twenty thousand now for, for your, your marketing plan. And I know throughout the year you get a number of requests approved. So I guess first of all, what is that total that we also give you on top of that? And I guess secondly, why is that not working?
So you'll have to repeat that, that question, but to real quick get to the second part and also to Stan's point of why isn't some of this already being done? And, and a lot of it is already being done, but it's definitely something that we need to be able to take a stronger approach on. Just as Gary Barnard, just as you said earlier, we have some of those challenges that are out there. And, and frankly, being able to build better capacity, to be able to be, really just be able to take on more of that role and to be able to try to get more of that accomplished is what we are proposing with this. There's no doubt that we ourselves feel like there can be more work done in these spheres. And so these are the spheres there that we're trying to, to share with you guys. And, and then to the second, your other part of that question, Bob, I apologize, I didn't fully hear the other part.
You know, twenty's in the budget, plus I know you come to us for a, a number of things throughout the year. What does that total up to?
So a lot of different projects that Main Street Beatrice suggests are projects that, yes, we come to you guys with an idea. They might be something that's an improvement in Charles Park, it might be benches or trash receptacles, things like that downtown, maybe signs marking public parking spaces. But those really aren't projects that really are directly from Main Street. I mean, they're, they're a partnership with the city, we're bringing some of those ideas. In the past, we certainly have contributed financially to a lot of those. We usually spend between twenty-five to, well, as little as, as twenty-five percent, usually as much as, as fifty percent of all of those projects. And we have definitely been the beneficiaries of the city trying to take on some of those things.
That's, that's them doing work for us that we don't pay them for, Bob.
You know, I, I'm just trying to get to a bottom line number here, that's it.
Well, the bottom line number is thirty thousand dollars this year and thirty thousand dollars next year.
No, but there's also on, coming back for a request for more money.
So as part of those requests for, for funds, we usually get between, depends upon what sort of projects we're doing and trying to help the city with, but we usually end up getting between about three thousand, about seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Usually when it's closer to seventy-five hundred, around those higher sides, I think maybe we got up to around nine. Those are years that we're doing benches, a lot of trash cans, purchasing a lot of those types of projects, flowers for the parking lots, things like that.
And those are all things that wouldn't get done without this organization.
Bob, to answer your question, they got sixty-three hundred dollars last year in FY twenty-one. Went for holiday activities, Rib Fest, flowers, farmer's market and chocolate levers. In FY twenty, they got eighty-two hundred dollars, the same events there, holiday pumpkin, uh, night market pumpkin, farmer's market, flowers, art and Rib Fest. In FY twenty-one, they got eighty-five hundred dollars. I got the same things there and then they, that's when they had the bike racks, the pet cleanup stations and the trash cans.
Okay, thanks.
Rich?
I'm confused, there's been so much going on here. Didn't Toby not say that we are regulated by certain guidelines on how we can spend this money? But didn't he also say that, that through other, other finances that we could probably fund that thirty thousand a year?
Not, not thirty thousand, you can do the marketing, which is already in your budget. You can do the marketing training and you can do the entrepreneurship. Those can come out of your economic development, which you budget every year to spend every dollar in that, that line item. It's just required by state statutes, you, you butt those budgeted. The one you can't fund or that I have a hard time finding a funding mechanism for is the consultations to property owners. That's one I can't see how it qualifies under state statute and I can't see how it qualifies on the economic development program.
Quick question there, Tobias. Looking at LB eight forty and obviously you, you understand this plan far better than I do, but under section three, number nine, technical assistance to businesses, there also talks about engineering, architectural, obviously we're not an engineer and architectural firm, but I'm thinking about these are still business entities, you know, the, these are usually businesses that own these properties. And so is that, you know, when we're thinking about these as actual businesses and this as commercial real estate that is a part of the cost of them being able to do their business, doesn't it not fall in, under that thought process there?
I don't believe so, I've, again, I've looked through our economic program that was approved by the vote of the people. I looked at the goals and eligible activities, I'm not seeing how that one qualifies at this time, but I've had about four hours to review it, so.
What would that part of it, how, I know you can't give me a-
There's no dollar amounts on any of these, I don't, couldn't tell you.
You can put, you could put any dollar amount on that you want, Rich. Say thirty thousand dollars. And it would be covered within that. Yeah, it works that way.
Guess the only thing I would add, it's been discussed long enough, but I kinda agree with Gary and Ted, I would like to find a way to, to, to work with Main Street.
So there's twenty in the budget already? So you're saying another ten thousand and LB eight forty dollars?
If Tobias, if, I mean, if you guys think that's, I mean-
Again, I think if, if Main Street were to find somebody who they want to do their marketing or their entrepreneurship, it sounds to me like you wanna do some workshops. So I'm assuming you wanna bring in somebody with some expertise in those areas. So if they have somebody and they bring them in, the city's the one who then contracts with that individual, so you're not giving money to the Main Streets, we don't have to look through their finances, the city hires them, the city works with Main Street, puts on the presentation. You can fund the same thing, you end up in the same place, but you don't give the money to Main Street and so you don't have to worry about whether or not you have to jump through all these hoops.
I guess is it easier to try to go through several dozen of those? Or being able to basically, in effect, hiring Main Street to be able to manage that and to coordinate?
It's easier to bring them all here individually, that way. Either way, I'm gonna have to check through all your finances, make sure they qualify. So it's just as easy if you bring in a contract with Betty who's gonna be here twelve times and this is what it costs, it's just as easy to bring that and have this council approve it at that point. We can then fact check everything on the front end and don't have to worry about on the back end.
And yet we don't have to do that with Engage. When they have a, when they have a retreat or they have a workshop or they have, where they have contacts with the people that are members of their board to, to figure out from them how to increase their business, that's what we hired them to do and we, they don't have to come to us and ask us for every single thing. Economic development is a moving target. They shouldn't have to come to us and wait and, and talk to you, have, have a meeting with Stan, wait another two or three weeks to get on a, a, a discussion, then get on a, but then get on a council meeting and then for us to discuss and they get their, by, it'll take two or three months for them to get their money and by that time, that's gone. That, that opportunity has left. So you, you most certainly can fund this at thirty thousand dollars a year for this year and next year. You most certainly can.
Okay, anybody else?
I do got a question, Sam.
Sure, don't mind.
I, I know we're not the only Main Street in the world, so how is everybody else getting their money?
It's a, a great question and because there's over fifteen hundred Main Streets across the nation, there's a lot of different examples. And obviously each state is different in what's legally allowable. You know, Nebraska is gonna be different than our sister communities over in Iowa or Missouri or down in Kansas or off in Georgia or wherever it might be, but you see a, a large variety. There's some of them, probably about a fifth that are actually a part of city government, they're actually a department of their city government. You've got probably about a, probably well over a third, maybe closer to half, that do contract for services, similar to what you currently are doing with Engage for their economic development work. So that's how those communities are funding theirs. There's a few others that have just a variety, I mean, it just depends upon what state law is.
Can you cite an, an example right here in Nebraska?
Unfortunately, Nebraska is one of our weaker states. We are right now one of about three designated Main Street communities. A couple of them are funded through their business improvement districts and things like that. But actually in the state of Nebraska, we are the only Main Street community with a full-time staff and so unfortunately, there's not great Nebraska examples. But if you look over at Iowa, Missouri, Kansas, Wyoming, Colorado, you know, there's lots of great examples out there. If you guys want examples of contract for services or examples of some of those other contracts, that's certainly something we can help provide.
Thank you.
Bob?
I'm trying to, maybe I'm like Rich, I gotta back up a little bit here. So we get, we get, there's twenty thousand dollars in the budget. And through eight forty funds, a number of these things could be funded.
Yep.
So in essence, if we do it that way, these individuals could end up with more money than the thirty thousand dollars. And isn't that a silver lining?
Sure could be.
And either way, no matter which way the, the council decides to go, whether it's a contract with Main Street or they bring in a contract for Betty to come in and put a presentation on, either way can come back to this council for approval for those first three bullet points. And those are okay, it's just that last one that we have some issues with that we'd have to work through.
Okay, just, I'm trying to figure out where this could be more funding.
Three, three of the four would be covered under this to begin with. Main Street, I'm sure can come up with some other things that might be covered with all the parameters that Tobias has said. We have the seventh of September, we have, on Tuesday, we have another meeting. And then after that, probably that's kind of the last date that they can come in and request things.
Request council approval then on the twentieth.
Yeah, so then, and that's, but you, you need everything before, probably after the seventh.
We approve the budget on the seventh so that Lyndon and Hannon can get all the paperwork turned into the state that they need to get turned in by the deadlines. Again, so if you wanna amend the budget, we refer to do it tonight. But the funds you're looking to expend are out of LB eight forty dollars or the economic development fund, which are all budgeted as of now to be all spent next year and you'd budget that way every year.
Yep.
So there's no amendment to the budget that would be necessary to earmark one way or the other, already in your budget that way.
I, I'm not asking a question, I'm just gonna give you one more statement for the council. You don't fund this thing this way. If you don't give them the thirty thousand dollars, you won't see that. The suggestion that's being made here from Tobias and the other councilman, a couple of the councilmen is, yep, bring us this project and we'll bring it back and well, then we'll vote on it. You will not see this. It'll get to Tobias's desk, if he doesn't think it needs to be funded or doesn't think there's a way to fund it, it won't get to this council, it won't get to this body, Stan. It will not get to this body.
Yes, it will.
It will get to your meeting on Thursday with a couple of councilmen, but it will not get to this whole body for a vote.
You're welcome to come to the meeting. And that is not the case. Anybody else have any questions? Gentlemen, Joe?
I am in favor of Main Street getting full funding as well. I'd, I'd like to see a way of getting-
Well, I think we're talking about a good compromise here.
Sure. Like to see us work to see how we can get this done, so.
Let me ask you a question, Mike. Anything you've ever brought to us, we, we, have we ever turned you down?
You know, we definitely have had a-
Not that I can remember.
We've definitely have enjoyed a, a great partnership. But some of the things that we are definitely asking for here are some of those more intangible things that we need to be able to build more capacity for. This isn't just the flowers, this isn't just the benches, you know, we're trying to really try to focus more on some of the economic development and really trying to work with our local entrepreneurs, our local business owners and try to, to make a difference. To be able to spend more time, more energy in those areas that we really do see as, especially after this pandemic, especially with the ongoing property issues that we've had. This is an area that, that we just strongly feel like is needing more attention and that's what we're requesting this thirty thousand dollars for. I definitely don't, you know, if you guys have got twenty thousand dollars set aside for, for marketing, there's no doubt that we don't wanna be raiding something that you guys have planned for, for other projects. You know, that's definitely not, the, the main crux of this request is truly more around that entrepreneurship side of things. I mean, it really is, the marketing side obviously is to support that. But yes, you know, that's something that I guess I wanna say is, because I know that, you know, obviously with us, our, our specific mission is, is definitely more focused within the downtown core. And if you guys have a twenty thousand dollars marketing that's planned on advertising other aspects of this community, I definitely don't wanna sit there and try to have you guys allocate that in full and total amount. So that's something else, I guess, just to, to make sure that as you guys are thinking about things, if, if you guys have plans for that, and I certainly know that staff has talked about that, I don't wanna take that part of it away. So that's just, I guess, one thing to kinda make sure we mention.
And we have turned them down, Rich. I tried to put money in the budget for them in the last two times the budget rolled through here. And- here, and, and it didn't get there. We have turned them down. And they continue to, they continue to function, but this is our opportunity to make it better. They're making our community better, this is our opportunity to help them.
You know, I, I remember when this, and Ted, you would, because you were here. I remember when Main Street first approached us to become an entity, and they told us within five years they would be self-funding. And that was twenties-plus years ago. But we seem to go through this every year.
And Rich, I, and I-
And I think that we've been good to them, and I think that we can get them the money somehow, but I don't know. I, and, and believe me, anything you can do, because Mike has done an excellent job, he really has.
Disagree.
And I think the money will get to him one way or the other.
Thank you, Rich.
And not, not, but we do have parameters by law that we have to follow.
One hundred percent.
And me not being an attorney, and this young man, good-looking guy right here, is telling me, we have parameters to follow, and-
One hundred percent.
So.
But, but real quick, just to your point of Main Street being self-sufficient, and obviously I've, I've only been here not quite eight years, so I, I wasn't part of any of those conversations, but-
Well, sure.
I know talking with some of our, our board members, especially some of those that were founding, I know they've, they've, I've heard different, different versions of that, so I'm not sure, you know, just like when we look across the country, you know, there's a lot of these Main Streets that are, a lot of them are being funded, you know, a very significant portion of their budget, and it's continuing, because the problem of downtown is frankly, probably will never fully be solved, when we have buildings that are currently a hundred and forty years old, and, you know, small businesses, it's definitely a constantly evolving world out there. And so, you know, it's just something that, you know, we, we've definitely seen a lot of success, we've very much benefited from our partnership with you guys, hopefully in both ways, hopefully we've been a, a benefit to this community. But as a nonprofit, again, we, we feel like we can do more, and we want to be able to do more, and with your guys' support, we feel like we can turn that up a notch in those areas.
Okay. Anything else, Jacob or Craig?
I just think there's a lot of momentum going downtown, and this is an opportunity to continue that momentum going downtown.
Perfect, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Anybody else regarding the budget? All right, next item on the agenda-
We gotta make a motion to close public hearing.
Beg your pardon.
I move that the public hearing be closed at eight thirteen PM. Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by-
Me.
Frayland. That the public hearing be closed at eight thirteen PM, your vote please, that is approved, eight zero. Next is a resolution, resolution number sixty-seven fifty-nine, to apply for federal assistance for the recreational trails program, for the purpose of extending Pioneer Trail from North Twenty-Sixth Street to South Twenty-Fourth Street.
I move that resolution number sixty-seven fifty-nine be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution number sixty-seven fifty-nine be passed and adopted.
Earlier tonight, we talked about one of the capital projects we're looking at is an extension of the trail system. This would be, for those of you who are familiar with Beatrice, Beatrice Family Chiropractic, Dr. RJ Crandall's office out there, it'd be on the opposite side of the street, you've got Gleason's Dental Clinic in that area. So, the trail starts at the high school, it starts to come back into town, and it stops there at the Crest Edition, and then the sidewalk system picks back up at Twenty-Fourth. So you have about seven hundred and thirty-eight feet, if I remember right, that there is no sidewalk, there's no trail system, there's nothing. If you go out there, oftentimes you'll see high school kids walking in the curb of the street to make that final connection there, and so what we're asking for is approval from you guys to go out and apply for a grant, to see if we can't concrete that last section there, those seven hundred feet, and connect those two sections. That's what this grant would be asking for.
What's the second cost, Toby, to do that? Just talk, talk your head-
I think it's about a hundred and ten, budgeted, this is eighty-twenty match, city matches twenty, or twenty percent, so roughly around twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars for this one.
Otherwise it'd be a hundred?
Hundred and ten, I believe, on this one.
Joe?
Didn't we have something we were talking about, I thought it was already last year, when we were talking about extending some sidewalks, we looked at several different, we had some type of a-
Yep, so we used the CBG revolving loan funds, if you remember, we had a number of those, we had about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars out there, we just spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of it in the downtown area, putting in sidewalks. We've got money, if you remember, one of the other projects was to install an ADA bathroom on the trail, so that one is scheduled to come in, and really we're just down, down to kind of a timing mechanism. We've got some more, excuse me, our, our CBG revolving loan funds coming in through a loan that's outstanding, but they're not coming in at the point where they'd be fast enough to get to pay for this project, and so if we can go out and acquire a grant to help us pay for it, it would allow us to use those dollars then to adjust some other ADA issues at other locations, maybe the Crash Street, the senior center is one that kind of has come up.
A quicker turnaround would that, could this be?
This grant? I think you'd look for the grant to get approved over the fall and winter months, I think you'd look for construction to get started, spring or summer. I know Mr. Burrows has got quite a bit of it already done and designed, and so that would just, you're probably looking at spring, summer construction time period.
Joe, what you're thinking of, they gave us a list and said, these are our projects, and give us this, the one, two, three, four, and this got pushed down. So it just didn't, it wasn't the most popular, but that's what, that's what you were thinking of.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, your vote please. That is approved, eight zero. Resolution sixty-seven fifty-nine has been passed and adopted. We have no ordinances tonight, public forum is next. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone for the, here for the public forum?
Lynda, everything okay?
See, I'm seven, I guess.
All right, with that said, our next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, note the date, it's Tuesday, not Monday, September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and we'll plan on having a work session on September twenty-seventh. Mr. Claybaugh?
I move that the meeting be adjourned at eight seventeen PM.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the meeting be adjourned at eight seventeen PM, your vote please, that is approved, eight zero. Thank you, everyone.
Seventh, twentieth-